All right, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is 5:31. Welcome everyone, and please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do need a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. I now need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061B.
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion in a second. Having a motion in a second. We need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Trustee Bane?
Yes.
Trustee Quinney?
Yes.
So we are in executive session. So at this time, I have to ask you all to leave, please. So we've come out of executive session, and we'll move into new business. First action item is regarding student number one. This is a petition to allow a student into Rath from High School.
We don't have a Rath from High School. We have a Lakeland High School.
That is correct. That is correct. But to allow the student back into Lakeland High School, or into Lakeland High School. It appears she's been in our district since fourth grade. For clarification to the public, March 23rd, 2022, we approved to not receiving students in enrollment, to open enrollment of students outside of our district. We closed our borders due to the fact that we have a continually growing population, and we don't necessarily have the resources right now to pop up new schools. So we did close our borders, March of 2022. The board has been made aware that there has been some miscommunication, and the intention of the modification to the policy, or to closing the borders, was so that if you're within our district, you can go attend our schools. If you move out of our district, you can no longer attend our schools. Those that were grandfathered in were the students that were already out of our district and had applications to be attending Lakeland. We grandfathered them in because they were already out of our district. They weren't in our district and then moved out for this year. However, that being said, with respect to the student that has been within our district since fourth grade, Zoe Ellison, do we need to have any discussion on this at this moment? So due to the misunderstandings and miscommunications for Zoe, we would ask that you follow the, complete the application for enrollment and allow to follow the normal processes, which would then be going through the principal, based on the principal's decision, then if need be, you would go to the superintendent. Okay, but please follow that process. We do apologize for the misunderstanding and the misinformation that was provided. That should not have happened. Respecting the situation as it is. Now understand that being outside of our borders, it would be best if you could get back into them to maintain in our school district. Okay, but for this year, go ahead and fill out the application and submit it, and it will follow through with the process.
Is that an open enrollment application?
Yes.
Okay.
The open enrollment application.
I might not want to do that tonight.
Yes, because it's, you know, and there's the form and the procedures, and it's all right there for you.
Okay.
Okay? You are welcome. You're welcome. The next student. This is same situation for senior.
This is student two.
Student two, yes.
There's a single letter that followed student two.
Correct.
Yeah. Stick with their heading. Student one two, can you do that?
Yes.
We can do that.
So for student two, it appears that this student moved out of our district
Before school was out.
And may not have either updated information or filled out an application to stay in district. I'm not sure.
Prior to this year, if a kid was attending and we already had staff for that student, unless we had discipline, attendance, or grade issues, we allowed them to finish the year.
Okay.
Just so it wasn't so disruptive until the child's learning.
Okay. Well, it would seem that this student has already paid all their fees and everything. They're good to go. So again, I guess I would, I would recommend that this student fill out the application, follow that same procedure.
Yep.
Okay.
Let the principal know where the child's at.
Okay, perfect.
And those are all available on our website under the policies.
Policy 3010.
Yep, under the
The open enrollment application?
Trustees page.
It's in the, it's also in the sky.
The forums, yeah. Just so they
Registration. It's part of the registration, I think.
Okay, and then for student three letter. Given the situation, be it the same, that they also received
Right.
conflicting information, I would state that they need to follow the open enrollment application. This is for the three students. That they would follow the open enrollment process, fill out the application, and submit it, and go from there.
That's concerning my kids. We've already completed it at the school. And I already had the principal approve it at that time, and that's where the communication barrier was different. Where I was kind of caught off guard with it is that do I still need to do the enrollment process? Or, because it was my understanding we already were other than the residency information.
That's just residency information, though that's not the open enrollment application.
Okay, so you wanted to just be a whole new, just basically redo it in the open enrollment then?
Did you complete the open enrollment application?
I believe I did it after returning. I think it was returning, but I put in our address, current address.
There's an actual application that you still have to complete even if you're returning?
So I think I went through all that at the school on registration date.
I'll verify with Mr. Everlin, and then if he doesn't have what he needs, he'll let you know.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Or you could be proactive, fill it out anyways, just in case.
I don't mind doing that. Might as well just do that.
And then Board Chair Thompson?
Yes.
I have four additional families from Lakeland High School who are in this same scenario. So may I reach out to Mr. Hoffman and ask him to follow the same process for these four families?
I would say yes. So at this time, I would, because these are action items, I would entertain a motion with regard to the direction we've given for these seven students. Actually.
Seven families?
Seven families, thank you.
You're welcome.
One, two, three, put one letter head through students.
That's why we changed it to families.
Oh, okay.
Okay, seven families.
Okay. Yep, so I would move to approve the open enrollment application process and for Superintendent Arnold to direct the process as we spoke about.
Four, seven students?
Seven families.
Seven families, yes.
Okay, I have a second motion.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the approval of the THS cross-country schedule. Do we need to have any discussion on this?
The only discussion that I would
Appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
And we didn't have any discussion on this issue last meeting when we were approving schedules, but I noticed, you know, that we're traveling kind of far and wide with some of these books. I think it might be worthwhile for having some discussion about that going forward. It's not going to change for the coming year, but at some point, particularly if finances become more crucial.
Right.
We've been supporting this travel, you know, with district funds, and so it's just an issue that really needs to be looked at.
I agree.
Trustee Jones, the board has had, you had that conversation, and I did let the two activities directors know that we were not going to continue to fund those long-distance trips. But for, we had that conversation after the fall sports schedules had been set. So those are the only teams that we're, right now, unless you want me to do it differently, that we are helping to get to those games. The rest of the head coaches have been made aware that they can fundraise to raise those funds if they want to do their, their long trips, and they're in the process of doing that. So I anticipate that it will just be the fall sports that the district funds this year. Unless you want me to do it differently.
Would you like me to have Rosina can, calendar this so that we can remember to bring it up, like, in the spring?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just jot that down.
I think a lot of the issue too, especially for Timberlake, is that Kellogg and Priest River are now not in their league. So they're having to go out further to find competition.
Or to even find players.
So that's, that is one thing that, unfortunately, that is the nature of the beast, and that's what is happening to the Air Mountain League, is that there's only, there's only three.
Lakeland only has Technically two.
Two schools and, yeah.
Right now, it's just Moners and Timberlake.
Yeah, Lakeland only has
Lakeland has Moscow and Sandpoint. Sandpoint, and that's it.
Is Lewiston a four A or a five A?
I think it's a five A. So that's part of the challenge, to be able to find other four A and three A teams to play. We have to travel. But as far as those long overnight trips that they liked to go on that don't have anything to do with league play, those were the trips that they notified that the district wasn't going to fund.
Like the tournament, the optional tournament type trips?
Yeah.
Well, on this schedule that's before us, for example, there's a trip, I'm assuming it's down to Boise Valley. It says Eagle Island, which is near Boise. You know, that's a, that's a significant, so that's going to be an overnight trip without doubt. The one to Omack, I don't know whether that's an overnighter or not, but it's significant travel.
Quite a ways, yeah. Didn't we also, what about those activity vans slash buses?
We're still waiting. Nobody will give us a quote because they can't guarantee that they can give them, and they don't know what they're going to actually pay for them. So Brian's continuing to work with them.
So that puts even more, I mean, either, then that's even more because the outside
Yeah, we have to
services are quite, and with fuel, I imagine it's getting going through the roof.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to be coming down, unfortunately. And then you just can't keep playing Moners Ferry, I guess, huh?
Over and over and over and over.
It's like Priest River.
I mean, they still play them, it's just not league games, yeah.
Well, all their games are away, with the exception of that one.
Or they're Maybe they're, yeah, not the games, but.
Any further discussion on the cross-country schedule?
Yeah.
Then I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the THS cross-country schedule presented.
A second. Having a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Would we like to take a short break before we enter into the administrative handbook?
Sure. Sure.
All right. So we'll go ahead and take a short recess. We're recording?
Uh huh.
So we are back live from Studio One. So we'll head right on into the administrative handbook.
So this is a tool that we've been using for five years in the district, but I am aware that the board's never seen it, and so this is just a kind of an informational little dive into this tool. We have gone through, Dr. Pasley and I have gone through it and kind of cut out the things that, that we don't use or, or that we've modified. So the intro section is just a contact information. How do you find the people you're looking for? Board meetings and policy information, so that agenda request form is in there, as well as a complete list of the policies. Budget and purchase protocols, so any forms that we need with regard to dollars. Just the request for district approval to submit a grant fundraiser or receive a donation. I'm not sure if the board's aware that staff fill that out before they apply for a grant. Simply because we want to, we've had situations in the past where we've had staff who have applied, and there's a matching or a percentage required on the part of the district, and so
They need to cover dollars without permission.
Exactly, so we've just asked them to submit the, the application, and then the district leadership team meets every Tuesday, and we go over any that have come in, and if there are no matching funds, and it's a reputable
It's bobs. Hearing aid.
Source.
Do you hear that? I think your hearing aid is screaming at me.
Is it?
Oh, now it stopped. It stopped when you were pushing on, or when you stopped pushing.
Yeah.
I pitched some sound, you wouldn't hear it.
He took his hearing aid and threw it in his pocket. He's like, I don't want to hear this.
I do, really.
I am.
So anyway, that's the purpose of that form. That's why we have it. And then that way, we also can find out if a school's getting a donation so that I can let the board know that, that somebody has made a donation.
Great.
The mileage form is there. It's highlighted yellow. Brian needs to update it.
Since we don't have access to it.
Yeah. Oh, you can't, oh, you can't see it?
No. You do not have access.
So I will give you to a mileage form. It's, I think, just, they don't have the, I gave the access to Rosina MS, so I'll just give it to the whole team. And then you should be able to, because I think they're all set for, even on with the Lakeland. So if you refresh, hopefully.
Where is this?
Well, Lisa.
In your share drive? Your board share drive.
Oh, so it says we don't have access to all requests.
I just searched for that, and there was actually a link to it. It's in the board communication information from Lisa Arnold. I just searched for the 2022, 2023
Because Brian hasn't updated it. It's owned by Dr. Meyer, and her stuff's been turned off, so that's why you can't see it.
Okay.
So we're just waiting, that's why it's highlighted. We're just waiting for Brian to
Okay.
Update it. But where I really wanted to spend time tonight is on, under the evaluation section. So the supervision evaluation plan needs to be approved annually, so in September, I will be bringing that as an action item, and it's the first link under there.
Okay.
But I didn't bring it tonight because I wanted time to actually go through all of the documents and answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
So I, we can look at that if you want, and it kind of outlines what we're going to look at. But I think it's, if we scroll down to under certified eval docs, previously, we just had one, just certified IPLP template. And if you click on domain two IPLP template, template, it still looks long, Board Chair Thompson, but that is because this is our evaluation tool, and there is a lot that's required in statute for the principal to complete. So while it's long, the vast majority of the work on this is done by the principal, not the teacher. And I'll show you where the teacher's work is. But what we have changed is previously, under domain one, there would be a rubric for each of, so there are four domains on this evaluation, and 22 components total. Previously, under domain one, it would say component one A demonstrating knowledge of content and pedagogy, and it would have all of the rubric language, and teachers would have to highlight where they thought they were at the beginning of the year and then at the end of the year. And then they would be asked to link in evidence and artifacts in at least one of the components within that domain. And then where it says overall score for component one A, that's where the principal marks their overall score. So this has been collapsed. So domain one, this is all work that the principal now does through their observations. And then there's a place for administrator comments to give meaningful feedback, and then overall score for domain one. And then if you scroll down to domain two, this is the one that we did not collapse because this is the domain two certified instructional IPLP. Because in order to receive APE money, they have to be either distinguished in domain two overall or domain three. And so what we're asking the staff now to do is to decide whether they want to focus on domain two, which is the classroom environment for the year, or if they want to focus on domain three, which is instruction for the year. So if I'm a teacher and I want to focus on instruction, my principal would give me the domain three certified eval. And so the work that the teachers are going to do is around whichever one they've chosen. So on this one, it's domain two. And so you can see that for component two A, creating an environment of, oh, it says and instead of and right here. An environment of respect and rapport. And then it tells you if you're unsatisfactory in that component, what you're doing, if you're basic, what you're doing, if you're proficient, if you're distinguished. And in order to be considered distinguished, the teacher's got, this is, the teacher needs to provide evidence and artifacts that demonstrate how they're reaching that distinguishedness. The principal gives the overall score, so you have all five components for domain two that they would address, and they would highlight where they are. And then in this area, domain two, would, this is where their growth goal would be. Because another part of being able to apply for APE money is you have to have had an individual professional learning plan, and there has to be reflection and so, and identification of growth goals. So instead of doing a growth goal for all four domains, we're focusing on the one area that they're going to focus on. So they would write their growth goal, and then we, they write their action steps for fall. In the mid-year, February, the principal meets with each staff, and they just talk about how are you doing in this area? What support can I give you? Do we need to tweak anything? And then there's a spring reflection. So that's really the work, because then domain three is collapsed, and it's just for the principal. We did leave, under each component, there's a place for evidence and artifacts in case a teacher wanted to put evidence and artifacts in, but they don't have to.
Okay.
And then domain four is also collapsed. So if you scroll down, be at below domain four, the observation tools there are there for the principal to use. So each year, one-third of the staff is on a formal year, and the formal year includes one formal observation, which is a 45-minute class period, and two walkthroughs. In the informal year, it's two documented walkthroughs, although our principals are in classrooms every week.
Right.
So they would pick which one they're going to use, and whichever one they're not using, they would take off for that teacher. So if I'm on a formal year, my IPLP would just show the formal year, and the principal would take off the link to the informal year. And then I can see all of the notes from the observations. The next part is just the dates, which we have to submit to the state. This is all still principal filling this out. And then by statute, we have to either have parent feedback or student feedback for teachers. And so our staff has chosen student feedback because they're their clients, and they, those are the voices they care about, want to hear from. So we have a bank of surveys that they can choose from, and they provide a survey to their kids. And then if it's a formal year, they actually have to link their raw data in. So they have to link the comments that come back from their students, so the principal has an opportunity to talk to the teacher about them. If they're in the informal year, they get to just look at their data and write a summary in this little box as to some of the nuggets that came out of it. What am I doing well? And then what, what are some areas that the students are saying that I could grow in? Also by stat, everything red just helps the teachers remember this is the APE requirements.
Okay.
But also in statute, we have to have, growth and student achievement has to be part of the consideration on the evaluation. And the statute outlines what we can use for assessments. So these are highlighted because they're, there have, there's been a change this year, and they're new.
Can, can you add the reference to those statutes in there? So when whomever is looking at this, they can, you know, find that or see the definition or
Yeah, I think I actually have it at the top.
It just makes it a little bit more explanatory.
Oh, I have, I've got the House Bill 523 linked in. So I can, I can go find the actual statute because it did become statute. So we can link that in?
So that leaves them with less, well, this gives them more ability to, I guess, take advantage of the information they're given to understand why there are all these things, that it's not you making it up. This is what the law says, you know?
Well, I will point out that on the supervision slash evaluation plan for instructional staff, teachers, DPS, it does say pursuant to Idaho Codes 335144 and 335152.
So we can just link those in to this document? But for transparency.
Although, yeah, that's kind of a, it's not a delineation of what's expected within those statutes.
There are actually several statutes, and then also IDAP rule.
Okay.
Where these things are lined out. But, uh, these, um, these are the assessments that we, statutorily, we can use. So the teachers pick what, whatever they're going to use, and they write their SMART goal. And we've had to really work hard with the staff on writing SMART goals because, um, they struggled with this part of it. The answer has to be seventy-five percent of your kids. So they were writing a SMART goal that said, um, you know, a, a certain percentage of, of my class will, um, or my class will grow seventy-five percent on this test. But the answer has to be seventy-five percent of the kids grow whatever. So we had to really work with the, with the staff. I think they've got it now. And, uh, so they write their SMART goal, so this is a piece that the staff has to, to write. And then in the spring, they attach a link to their data to show whether or not they actually made their growth goal. And then down here, they put, um, what percentage of students actually met the goal. And we have to have the exact percentage because we have to supply that to the state. There's a very large career ladder data, um, system spreadsheet that, uh, Brooke and Ma, Morgan have to do. And all, almost all of the data, the reason this is so long is most of what's on here has to go onto that data sheet in order for them to be considered for APE. So everything that is needed is on here. Then the, the principal completes the overall performance. They have to note whether or not they've held leadership, because that's an APE requirement, and then there's the recommended rehire. So we've significantly cut down, even though it's still twenty-one pages long, we have, the only thing that the teachers now need to do is focus on one domain, and they've got to put in their SMART goal, um, their growth goal and their student survey data.
Now, respecting that we've never seen the IPLP, the IDLP, um, you know, I'm.
A completed one?
Well.
Or what it looked like before?
What it looked like before. How much have we transitioned or changed from it being, uh, teacher completed? To, because now you're saying a lot of this is completed by the principal.
Because it's also their evaluation tool at the end of the year.
Okay, so I'm just, because I know, I was told, uh, one person's IPLP was thirty-nine pages to start with. And then things had to be uploaded and supported and this, that, and the other.
The reason it, the reason it was so long, just, um, so for the three collapsed, all of this rubric language has been taken out.
Okay.
So that was why it was so long.
Right.
Um, and previously, teachers were required to have evidence and artifacts in all four domains, but not in all twenty-two components.
Okay.
There was, uh, and, um, so we did scale that back. Because what we, what we have heard from the teachers is it's so vast that we just want an opportunity to, I just want to be able to focus on what I think I need to grow in.
Right.
And, um, so we, we, so now it's just domain two or three. Because if you're going to focus on domain three, which is instruction, you're actually also going to focus on domain one, which is the planning. But you don't have to put the work into that because it'll show up in your three. So we cut back on what the teachers have to do.
Okay, well then, but I guess what I'm trying to fi, figure out is, have we now increased more workload on the principals with these?
It's the same amount of work that they've done in the past.
That was my question too, if we've transitioned from teacher done to principal done.
No, it's actually less.
Oh, really? Okay.
Because we.
There's less to review and look through and?
Yes, as far as, and so we have one principal who, instead of putting links in, his IPLP as a principal was like eighty-four pages long because he just put the picture in. Well, when you put a picture into a document, it makes the whole, everything expand. And so, um, so it looked like it was really long, it was just, it wasn't really, it was just a lot of pictures to scroll through. But that takes a lot of time to go and give meaningful feedback. So, um, the, this has always been kind of twofold. It's the individual professional learning plan for the teacher, where they get to reflect on their craft, identify what they want to grow in for the year, and then kind of put in evidence and artifacts around those things. Um, but it also has always been used as the final summative evaluation. And it's always been the principal's responsibility to put the final score in. So that part has not changed though. And, but we, um, we actually made the observation forms a little bit easier for the principals so that there's less, um, data entry and more conversation about what's happening in classrooms, which is what they really want.
Yep. Well, and we took out all of the parts where they had the goal set on every domain. That was like, there was a lot of pieces that came out of it that you get to, just as a principal, focus on one domain, specific to the strengths of that person. And if the person wants to add more, I mean, you have to eventually, at the very end, score it. But throughout the year, you really don't have to mess with any of, anything other than that one domain. And then at the very end, you're doing it, and we minimized the observation piece. So when we showed this to principals to get feedback, like, what do you think about this? I mean, several of them did the happy dance. They were just like, thank you so very much. Because this was, it was trying to hit all four domains was just super time consuming, to the point where they felt like it was a ginormous hoop.
And we did run it by Jason Bradbury today. We met with, with him. And, um, we asked him his impression, and he said, the teachers are going to be so happy.
Yeah.
So, um, it's always a work in progress. And, uh, we, we take input at the end of each year, how can we improve it? Because supervision of stu, of teachers isn't supposed to be a hoop. It's actually supposed to be meaningful conversation for professional growth. And so we had to be careful about not taking away so much that that part was gone, and it was just a summative evaluation again, which is what it used to be, where there wasn't any input really from the teacher, it was all the principal. Um, now it's done in collaboration. A lot of times they talk a lot about what, what the principal's seeing, what the teacher's, um, thinking. And, uh, so I, we feel like this is going to be really good this year. And I'm very excited to show it to the teachers. So. We did the same with the admin, IPLP, which they were very excited about. The admin, the administrator IPLP is only three domains and fourteen components. And, uh, so they have a domain one, uh, two or three that they get to pick from.
Is it the K twelve admin IPLP?
Yeah.
Under principal, you then.
Yeah, so now you can see there's a, that's the overview doc. And then there's a domain one, the domain two, and the domain three, just like the teachers. So they get to pick which domain they want to focus on this year.
Oh, okay.
And we took out, there was, there were some pretty big hoops that were put in place for the principals that really got in the way of them being in classrooms, um, watching instruction and, and having conversations that needed to happen. And so we pulled some of those. So for example, they were required to record, um, post-observation conferences, and then they were supposed to watch them and reflect on them. That's just a lot of time that they could do in classrooms.
Yeah.
And, um, so we took that piece off for them, which they were pleased about. And then all of Brooke's, um, HR processes and hiring, the, the forced choice matrix templates, everybody who's participated in an interview with us have, you've used these, so they're all here. And then, uh, technology, and then safety. Special ed, and then our teaching and learning. So it's really just kind of a wealth of information, lots of forms. These are, I guess, this is the tool that kind of goes side by side with our policies. So the policy tells us what we should do, and these tools tell us how to do it. And they're all embedded in this one document.
There's another link.
Uh, the literacy.
Oh, okay.
So I know there's a lot of information, and I'm sorry that you didn't have this prior to this meeting, so you could kind of peruse. But it, this is just informational, so if you, um, between now and the September thirteenth, uh, board meeting, have, um, questions, we can chat about them. There are, there's a lot of really good, uh, tools in here.
Why is the cohort agreement in yellow?
Chad and Michelle are still working on it, deciding if they're keeping it in place or changing it.
Okay.
And the classified eval docs are yellow because we're meeting with the, uh, classified district input, um, team, uh, next week. And I wanted to get some, I didn't get to participate in the last meeting with them in June. Uh, so I just want to be able to hear from them if there are ways that we can make their tool better before we start tweaking it.
Okay.
That was our monitoring system of, do we have?
Where are we at in the process?
Yeah.
And this is a lot of, uh, info.
And I guess part of the biggest thing is looking at the statute, the IDAPA rule and our policy, because according to IDAPA and the others things, it's the board's duty to make sure that all these things are lined out. But the state's, um, template is, um, two new tabs, is, uh, three pages. So I don't know why ours is so long for their IPLP.
Our IPLP actually is the exemplar for the state. If you go to the State Department's website.
Yeah, that's what I'm on. It's, it's, it's only three pages, three goals. Goal one, and you name the domain and component. Goal two, and then of course it has your action steps, resources, timeline, evidence, mid-year, and summative.
That's probably the teacher's IPLP. So what we've done is put the IPLP and the evaluation tool on one document.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
That's, so that's why it's so long, because by law, we have to have a score for every component within each domain. And it was hard for the teachers to keep track of what was required for advanced professional if it wasn't all in one place. So, uh, we, we, I just created it in such a way that if you do all these things, then we've, um, we're meeting all of those expectations. And actually, I think ours isn't, not on the State Department, but the State Board. Because they're the ones who will receive the supervision evaluation. And I've been on the state supervision, um, or the evaluation audit team for the last seven years. Which helped me build that template because every time we audited and then somebody got dinged, I was like, ooh, we need to make sure we have that. So, um, it looks long, but it's not, I think the way we've done it, it won't be a lot of work for the teachers. And the work that they are doing will be meaningful and not hoop. We're trying to get away from the hoops.
Right, yeah.
And I appreciate that because, I think there's nothing worse than thinking all your functioning for is a hoop to jump through.
Yeah, I think if, I think if that's what teachers think that supervision is about, then we're missing the mark because, um, we're not helping teachers get better, which means we're not helping kids. So it needs to be meaningful.
So it looks like that policy was updated in two thousand nineteen August. Our, uh, evaluation of certified personnel.
On the emergency closure protocol, we need to update the name of the clerk and board.
Yeah, well, we need to, um, I have a meeting scheduled with Jessica to go over the, all of that. And, um, there are several names, I think, in there that we have to change. That has not been updated.
Quite an extensive protocol.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, like, have it hanging on my bedroom wall. So I don't miss a step.
It's quite extensive. Didn't realize it was that difficult to determine if we needed to close for snow or not.
Well, we're gonna take a look at.
Just change it to look out the window.
If it's snowing, cancel school.
There are some in the district who would think that that's how we do it.
No, I don't.
It depends on whose window you're looking out to.
Yeah, yeah.
What was the name of that one?
The, um.
It's under, uh.
Administrative resources.
And it's snow closure.
Oh. Yeah, because last year, we didn't close the school when we needed to, and then we closed the school when we didn't need to. It was funny. I thought it was funny.
Yeah, well, remember, I told you in my interview that this is the one thing that stresses me out, is calling, having to make a decision about snow, so.
Always err on the side of, let's just close.
Caution, I, yeah, I don't want to be on the front page of the news because our kids get an accident on the bus.
No. And you don't want to field a thousand phone calls from parents that are ticked because they have to hike through three feet of snow to try and get to the front of the class, the front of the building to get their little kiddos. Because, you know, I was one of them.
Yeah, that day when the.
That was important.
Lots were off. I got stuck so many times that day when I was out in schools, because it was bad.
Yeah, there's a, um, the, uh, let's see, what was the link I found? Anyways, it still has your maiden name, um, linked inside the document.
On which one?
Uh, it's in the, uh, suicide intervention directory, but it's the suicide intervention protocol flow chart. I wonder if I could put a, tag it, no, I can't do anything to it, is I could tag it and?
Somebody got a dog whistle?
You're pushing on your hearing aid again. We don't have access to the code of ethics. We don't need to know. That must be effective.
I'd like to do that.
They don't want us to know.
Um, uh, Ramona, which document did you say?
Yep, it was, um, Suicide Intervention Protocol Flow Chart, the narrative.
Okay, see it right there?
It's inside.
Up or down?
Down.
No, it was a, uh.
Was that our school climate?
It was, um, admin, yep, mm-hmm, exactly. So the second line item, admin, suicide prevention and risk, if you click on that. And then you go, um.
I can give you access to.
Right there, Roseanna's got it up.
Which one?
Yep, flow chart.
These are all owned by Heather Hamilton.
Yeah, they are. It's that one there, so scroll down to where it's red. There you go, right there, um, the second bullet point.
Oh, so this is next to?
Yep. Yep. Which is a minor thing, but you know.
Yep, it's confusing to people.
Can you open the Code of Ethics, Board Chair Thompson?
No.
That's weird, it says it's open.
Under the Administrator Resources? I know.
Yeah, 'cause I'm the owner.
Oh, it says you do not have access.
I'm gonna send it to you right now.
So I need to know basically. I don't need to know.
It says Lakeland, anybody from Lakeland can access it. But somebody could,
Anybody but me.
Why? Because I can't either, so.
Oh, wow. Now I feel special.
Okay, so update, you'll see if that works now. It's so weird.
Now I can.
Yay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, and the,
Okay.
The LJSD OSS letter still lists the prior superintendent.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all, uh,
Someone else, yep.
Yeah, we need to have Heather change all that.
And the organizational chart was never updated with the board. The board wanted Norma Needs Title One to flip to Title One Consultant Feature Norma Needs. And I know it's coming back before us, so it's not a big deal, but,
Yeah, we just wanna fix it.
Yeah, we wanna make sure we get everything corrected and... Well, this is, this is very extensive. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a lot of really good information in here. Like I said, these are the protocols that we use to kind of live the policies.
Yeah.
On the WHO to contact directory, it's also, it says your maiden name.
Lisa.
Okay, I thought we went through all the booths. Not this one. We did, but I still call you Arnold, so, or Sexton, so it was probably my fault. Done, I can cross that off. Thank you.
Can you do a find and replace instead of having to go through each one of them?
Probably.
Just leave your name as, please Sexton, it's so much easier. Just ask my wife. It's fifteen years and she hasn't changed her name.
Yeah, well, my husband would prefer that I not go by my ex-husband's last name.
So would, so would I.
You're not following the role and vice that you said before we started talking.
I know.
Okay, so I will bring on September, whenever it is, um, the Supervision Valuation Plan, which is supposed to be approved annually. You guys, you have never done that?
No, we have not.
This is the first time.
Yay.
And then if there are any other, as you look through this, you have questions or you find other areas that we missed that we need to update, you can let us know.
Ten Things Not to Say in IED. I saw that too, and I was like, I gotta remember to go back, yeah, go back.
Well, that's why we put it in there because we felt like, you know, unless you have a special ed degree, there's principals are overseeing that and they don't necessarily know that, so.
We don't promise, don't promise resources that we can't deliver. Yeah. You are officially Arnold.
Thank you.
So that's all I have for the admin handbook.
I appreciate that.
Yes, and it's now in your drive, so as you guys are working through policies, you'll be able to pull this up to make sure that the protocols are very easily followed policy.
Which drive did you put it in, Rosanna?
Uh, the one that says,
Communication.
Information from Lisa Arnold.
Oh.
Sorry. Let me look, look the name up for you.
Okay, 'cause I don't find it in here. What I, I had to search it and it was on the information for Lisa Arnold.
Board Communication.
Oh, Board Communication, yeah. Oh, there we go, Information from Lisa Arnold. Got it. Okay, now I know where to find it. We're good. So, we need to request access to the Unanticipated Repairs List. It's in our Communication from Lisa Arnold, but there's no access. Really? It says,
So can you send me the request access so I can?
I will do that.
And then I will turn the agenda back over to you because the next part is the Superintendent Evaluation.
Yes, and nothing's uploaded for that. Let's see here. Let's go to, the eval docs. So I'm gonna make, 'cause I'm so creative in how I do things. Do I have a menu? Do it here? Thirty. I'm getting so smart. It's a miracle. Looking for, okay, so, we need, okay, so I'm gonna try and do this. Let's see here. I copy. I'm sorry. Moving. Here. 'Cause I'll just make the copy. This first one. Okay. The WHO to contact directory, under the base program. Thank you.
Down here.
Hey.
Thank you.
Uh, we mentioned on the district website. And two. There. Yeah, the district website under the programs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And if we just do this. Oops. I apologize for not having this prompt prayer too. Like you, I have every day of the week. What I'm doing is I'm taking last year's tool, so y'all can figure out what I'm doing.
I was just gonna ask, is there something I can do to help?
Possibly. What I did was I took last year's tool and, um, actually y'all can probably go into it, into the super event, Superintendent Evaluations file. I created a twenty-two, twenty-three folder, and I put the two tools in there that we used this last year. And now I'm deleting all the information because I made copies.
Right.
So that we can release them to Lisa to review, so that we make sure we're all on the same page, but no information what's given from this last year. And I don't know any quick way to delete these scores, so I'm doing it in a safe way. That's a quick way to show. 'Cause I wanna keep all the files.
I'll send you days of link if you haven't found it. I emailed you to the directory.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have a Nutrition Committee or anybody that looks at nutrition in the, in the district other than? I don't know how that, how is that even handled?
Um, they have, they just have really strict parameters that they have to follow. And Kevin actually met with, um, our elementary principals last week to just talk about ways to make the food a little bit more nutrishing for our kids. Um, especially at the elementary level. They're just, they're, he, his parameters are pretty strict as far as how much sodium and,
Right, yep.
fat versus protein versus carbohydrates and, um, but anyway, they're gonna work together to try to come up with something that kids want to purchase.
Okay, so question. If I want to, 'cause I'm changing this to this document, do I just copy this address and put it in?
Yes.
Okay. We have to really change this part. Get that link. Okay. Unlink. Do the open source. My glasses, it's still going to back, okay, so go ahead and close that one. I'd wear my glasses if I don't help. So hit the, hit the, Okay. Um, we might have to redo the whole clean linked objects. I remember it gave me a really hard time on that. Uh, we can't, I never, I would just take this back to the, Well, if we, um, if we unlink,
Yeah, go ahead.
But it's a thing, so now you have to redo the whole thing. That's what I'm saying, it was a pain in the butt, um, last time just. Sorry, Michelle, I didn't mean to.
Oh, no, you're good, you're good.
Click where you were at.
Uh, just because of the way Google, no, you have to embed the object, um,
This, embedded in,
Yeah, but you have to do, yes, but you have to do a linked embedded object. So we'll just have to work on it.
Okay. So then I can just share it or?
Yeah.
Hi, okay, so we,
In Excel.
But I unlinked it and all those are still there.
Yeah, you can, you can,
Can I just delete this?
Yeah, just delete the numbers.
Okay.
In the spreadsheet, yeah, just the,
'Cause then it'll pull just the, it'll pull zeros or?
Well, it's completely unlinked.
It's the, it's the block.
Right.
Right. Well, it's not pulling anything. The, the Excel spreadsheet is linked in, but then we linked in just the small summative blocks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I was able to delete those numbers. I just need to, well, I don't need to because I have mastered as much as I can tonight. Y'all need to figure it out.
And what are we figuring out?
Just the, the summative box, how to put those numbers, link them back into the spreadsheet tool.
Whatever my pay grade.
Yeah, right. Okay, so are we good with me showing this?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I, oh, I just need to make sure. Did we delete? No, we did not. Okay. I'm going,
It looks like there's still,
I guess that information can stay in. Let me see, oh, yeah, let me. This was put in, so let me go here. Delete that. Um, delete that. So now I think yes.
Uh, um, the goal one.
Mm-hmm.
Start of year, end of year percentages.
Well, what I was thinking,
Do those stay?
Well, I was just gonna leave them on there. We can review them with her, show them what they were last year because this is information everybody has. It's not anything specific.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, so. Let me see, and this one is, I'm gonna go on that one. And that is, okay, what I'm not, okay, so. Then I'm gonna do shift. Okay, well, same, just not a number. Oh, I guess I need to, do I, yeah. So I need to go. Yeah. Oh, let me add. Okay, so it won't let me give her access because she's not part of the shared drive, but I can't let her, well, I don't know, can I? Can she be part of this drive?
You have to add her to, which one is that? The um.
It's the soup eval docs, board member document.
You could make a copy of it and move it into a different place and that you could share it from if you don't wanna make me a member of that.
I don't want you, it, it's not that I don't want you to be a member of it. There's information in there that.
Right, yeah. Nope, I, I'm not taking offense at all. I just, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. I understand. So if you created a, if you created a new folder in the shared drive for me, where my stuff could go, then, and you made a copy and put it in there, then you could make me a member of that and I wouldn't have access to the others.
That's just more convenient.
So if we actually just did a shared drive, I'll do a new one. New, making.
She's, she's in, in where? Twenty-two, twenty-three, that's all. Just that directory is all she needs access to. What are you talking about? Uh, go back to where you were. There's no sense of doing a new one and copy and all that cause we're gonna end up with a mess.
Yep.
So I just shared this, this directory to her is all.
Oh, okay. Well, it wouldn't let me do that. How'd you do that?
Well, just the directory.
It's a secret.
Yeah.
You don't get to know.
Oh, man.
So what's the name of the?
Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. It should've just sent you an email.
See, I'll show her here. I show me, David, you, Randy, Bob, Rose, Roseanne. I guess this one music would come into play. Let's see.
Yeah, uh, well, it just went away. It was there.
It went, please see.
I didn't know it. Go ahead and do what you're gonna do. This is, it should've went through. Okay, so request, look in your email, who's, who owns this folder? Who's the manager of it?
Me.
Okay, so do you have um? Anything in there to say something to the manager?
Yeah, share a folder.
Yep.
Oh, I have to share it to, with you because you're already.
Well, you're sharing it with, um, no, you're giving Lisa access. I'm requesting that you do Lisa access.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
There you go.
You see? Only members can access the contents of the shared drive.
Okay.
Oh, open share settings. Let's see if that helps. Lisa Marlowe. Are you guys in the, are you guys in the manage access over on the side?
The what?
Over on the right-hand side. If you click on the document, there's the window over on the right-hand side. And it says who has access.
Right.
And then it says manage access. Are you using that link?
No, I was trying to move up the, so she could see the whole, both the documents that were in there.
Right, I would not have to.
Can we? Yeah, just copy it and then we'll just do what you're gonna do. We just have to remember not to end up in a quandary like before.
Okay, how do we make, how if I can, like a new drive? Maybe. So you wanna go to my shared drives? It makes it like I can't create any more shared drives. Am I over my limit? Is there a limit?
I don't wanna be a creator. I can't share or change permission.
Oh, it said who is the manager though, it says. So let's see new folder. Yep. You have one.
That you are the manager.
Right, only because I was like, oh, look, I can create a new drive. Lucky me, but I don't know. Okay, some of this had to be smart.
That's just, uh, because some of us don't know what we're doing.
So I go there. Can I?
You're just creating now, you're. Show, show, and you find. Okay, so I just created a shared directory and now a copy, a copy goes over there.
Where did you put the shared directory?
Uh, I just shared it. It's not under anything. Remember this stuff you should be in your email. It's just its own, it's not under anything. It's just its own directory.
Forgot an email.
And the.
Yep.
The folder.
It's empty, yeah.
Yep.
And then she's gonna copy in.
Those two documents. Okay, so they should be in there now, the copies of the.
I see that, yes. Ta-da, woo. Okay, so. Last year, what we did, well, okay, we were given this superintendent evaluation, a guide for school boards from Idaho School Board Association. When I came on the board, the very first evaluated evaluative tool we had was horrid because everything was all over the place. And then the next year, we were given this and the prior superintendent went through with David Frinkman and put a whole bunch of stuff in it that were like, okay. So then this last year, what we did was we took the superintendent's job description and we broke that out into six domains.
Categories.
That, based on the job skill, we decided to um score. Because what the problem we had in the past was, um, first of all, we did not create the tool the prior superintendent did. And throughout the year, she would attach things and we would, we would put our info in there and then it would be gone and then other information would be there. And it, it was just not controllable from a board perspective. Now. With respect to the job description, we also understand that it may be slightly outdated or need to be improved. Because we were told that, you know, there were a lot of things the superintendent did that wasn't reflective on the job description. However, the job description was never brought back to us to say, let's look at this, let's change it and let's go from here. So I sailed us to say, what I think you do need to do is look at um what we have category out as far as a point score, cause that's the, the long spreadsheet that we took several nights to create. Because we didn't, we didn't know what else to do. Um, we didn't get much help from ISBA and it's not appropriate for the superintendent to tell us this is what you're going to rate me on. And we also want it to be fair and reasonable, so look at that. In the guide from ISBA, which they give a whole layout of a bunch of, you know, when things should occur, when things shouldn't occur type of a deal. It would be great for us to understand, Rosanna, can you click on the superintendent evaluate that one right there? And open it up.
And it's updated with the proper um your table in it, except I don't know why the purple one's not um showing the score correctly. I'll have to go back and look at the sheet.
Okay. So, um, yeah, the first couple of pages, uh, you know, are just, they give us, they give us phases, which are not really something that the board. I guess what I'm trying to say in an awkward way is we wanna collaborate with you on the evaluative tool. Because it needs to be able for, we need to be able to measure your job duties as a superintendent, but we also wanna be able to provide you with adequate feedback so that you hear what we're saying and we hear what you wanna be.
That's the review on.
So the phases, the phases at the top of the, at the top, um, the first page of that. Those, those phases are actually part of IDAPA and that's why that, they're broke out the way that they are as far as what needs to be done. And that's what we, that's what we left.
I'm gonna open the copy.
Yeah. Yeah, we left in there what, um, cause what was, what has happened?
That piece.
Yeah. We don't, we're not bound by these. These were given to us and said, here, follow them. And um if, Rosanna, you could scroll up. Keep it going. Keep going. We'll get back to that color chart. Keep going. Okay, right there. That information is there from last year's. Um, because we do need to incorporate the SIP in your evaluation, we took the three goals that were on the SIP and tossed them in there with the growth being what was required on the SIP. So, um, the frustration with that is there's, it, from my own opinion, nobody else's, is that in utilizing the SIP goals, I mean, that's reflective on every single teacher that needs to implement the teaching. And when you don't have any curriculum, I mean, it's, it's a challenge. So, we don't, it's my understanding, we don't have to have every single one of those goals be the SIP plan. We can have however many goals you feel you want to achieve. But what I don't want is nine goals with all sorts of links and treasure hunts. Please, that, that will not make me very happy.
Well, my goal is to make you happy.
Yeah. Yeah, nine goals, a treasure hunt, it's ridiculous. So it, it, we want this to be as um achievable, or at least I want it to be as achievable as possible.
Can I just clarify? Do my goals all have to come from the SIP?
No.
Okay.
Correct?
They do not. The SIP technically is the only evaluation tool that we are bound to turn in to the state. But that does not preclude the board from, so it legally is your evaluation, the SIP. But that does not preclude the board from creating an eval of what's going on in the district. This evaluation tool is very simply every policy that the superintendent's responsible for and what the um job description said and then these SIP goals. That's it.
Yeah.
It's just color-coded because the, I mean, there is nothing really other than that was, here's the job description, here's the policy, and that was, that's the only thing in there, so.
Now, if you can scroll back up, Rosanna, to the color block, right there, okay. If you click on the hyperlink that says soup eval tool, twenty, yep, go ahead and click on it. Okay, this is what we created off of the superintendent's job description.
And board policies.
And board policies that related to the superintendent's duties.
Superintendent responsibilities.
So you can.
And the color coding is the phases that you.
It, no, those are actually, those are the categories that the IDAPA requires them to be evaluated on. And this is where those different pieces fit into those categories.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's seven categories, vision strategically, leadership, instructional leadership, management of organizational leadership, collaboration with family and stakeholders, ethics and integrity, governance and legal leadership, and increased knowledge and skills.
That's all the way at the bottom, Rosanna?
Yeah.
Of that, um, for, yeah, scroll all the way to the bottom of it. Scroll down.
Is it the sidebar?
It's not giving you one?
Can you use your arrow?
Is this where it goes?
I heard it won't go down.
That's weird. It looks.
Does it look, is it different, something else?
I'm just wondering if it's frozen.
Yeah, uh, three's frozen, one through.
I can scroll online.
Yeah.
But the current window is too small.
One through seventeen is, that's frozen.
It's saying it's too small, so it's not letting you navigate.
Oh, that's weird.
Where's my percentage?
Oh, right there.
I closed that.
No, why did it do that to those?
It says rows were frozen.
Yeah, why?
It's one through seventeen are frozen.
Yeah, unfreeze them. Why, why were they frozen?
Yeah, I don't know. How do you unfreeze them in this?
There's a setting, yep.
For right.
It's uh. Oh, freeze.
Yep. There you go.
There you go.
Okay, so I have frozen.
Okay, so all the way at the bottom was what she was originally referring to. Keep going all the way down. So right there. Yep, now make your, yep, now make your uh.
There we go. So we, um, this last year just, we met and we individually gave our scores and then it's automatically calculated and it goes down into that little box which pops up on the app. We got pretty high tech. So, um, what I'd like you to do, I guess, would be to review the information that's there. Let us know what goals you'd like to have. And let us know if you feel anything that's in this long spreadsheet is um not applicable. Because it is based off of the job description that we have currently. You'll see at the end of each, each of those lines, Lisa, that there's a number in parentheses at the end of each um row. That will.
That will refer to either the job description, if it's a, just an individual number, or if it says BS, or BS. If it says BP and then a number, that'll be board policy.
Oh, perfect. And/or BS. Okay, so, um, just so I can wrap my head around this, so back to the goals.
Yes.
I can, I'll look through the SIP and, and kind of figure out which goals I want to put in here. Are you, do you want all of the literacy, like the literacy goals there, the college and career goals?
Well, they don't have to be in here. They don't have to be. We don't have to choose SIP goals.
Oh, because we're already being held to the SIP. So, my, I have two big goals this year, one being passage of a levy. Um, and under that, lots of action steps that tie into a lot of these pieces. So I can write that up for you, if that's what you would like. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
Yes.
And you don't want lots of goals, so I have.
Well.
Should I have one in each of these five or six domains? Is that too many?
Well, they're sort of set already. You'll have to go through and look because they're all, they're set. The only, they had, only thing in here is what the board policy says and what the job description says. There was nothing in here that said, we want you. It doesn't exist. The board never did that in this instance. So, if there's something in here that you think needs to be changed or updated, then we need to look at it, whether it's part of the job description or the board policy. Because that's the only thing in here. There is no expectation of the board in this evaluation whatsoever. It was just trying to get the person to do what the job description said and do what the policy said. That was it.
So, so, but I should be writing, I guess I'm confused. I should be coming to you with some goals that I'm working toward that would be part of this tool.
Yes.
Okay? I just don't want to.
Yeah, which I believe would be on that literal, this literal document here. And there are instructions on the actual document that Rosanna's scrolling through. And with the phases and everything already set out, but, um, that is, I believe, the document that, um, you would actually enter your goals in.
Perfect.
Yeah. And then, you know, look, peruse the other one. Um, yeah, they are sort of, here's your goal one, here's the target, here's how we're going to measure it, blah, 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 blah. And then, and then the other one is, like I said, you just sort of scroll through and see.
And I would, I mean, if you want to make one of your goals being the passage of the levy, well, obviously, the measure of that is whether or not it passes. So there's no start of year, end of year. It's just, but.
There are a lot of action steps that could be tied to it.
Well, if the goal is to, uh, increase communication within the community for the passage of a levy, well, then, you know, meeting with different groups, doing the, um, podcasts, you know, making that aware to the public, showing the steps that you're taking to increase that, well, that is measurable in the sense of you're doing all these action items. You're improving the, the connection with, within the community. So. You see what I'm saying? Cause it, there doesn't have to be a start of the year and end of the year. And, and looking at it that way, there are other ways to measure whether or not you're achieving the goal. So I don't want you to think that you're bound to this format of measurable outcome, start of year, end of year. Okay?
Um, so, uh, last question for right now, I think. How, I'm looking, now I'm looking, I'm on the spreadsheet. And for each one of those, um, items, how do, how would you want me to communicate to you where I think I am in each of those? Or do you want me to? Are you just going to do the evaluation based on what you see me doing? Because I heard what you said, you don't want a treasure hunt. So I just, I don't know if that's, we, we meet every so often and we just have a conversation and I can talk to you about this. Do you want, I can provide artifacts if that's what you want? Or do you just want to do it based on what you're observing of me, which is how we do it in schools? So I'm open to whatever you want.
A lot of, a lot of that, um, we can see by simple observation, you know? Or some of it says, you know, maintain the employee handbook and blah, blah, blah. Why you just.
Show us.
Our admin book, right?
Yeah.
It says, you know, um, uh, maintain, you know, something for whatever it was, the bus drivers or something with the transportation. I mean, most of that we get just from having a meeting or email or, um, I mean, I don't, I don't.
I don't have a problem meeting other, either, once in a while to say, you know, maybe we are asking her, okay, what are you doing here? Or wait, you know, this isn't necessarily something that we can see in board meetings or that we see happening. How are you approaching this or addressing this, um, item? So I. Well, on our little, uh, thing. With the different phases. I just didn't say that we're supposed to meet. Yes, it does, under the instructions, which, um, we may want to revamp the instructions. Okay. But, uh, where's the thing? Okay, so it says, uh, in July, we're to review the previous goals and determine new priorities and strategies. Superintendent develops personal targets in relation to our goals. Which, in all fairness, I think as a board, when we hired you, we kind of discussed what our goals are. So I don't really think we need to re-elaborate what our goals are, because I believe we're all on the same page.
I'd agree with that.
Um, in October, we're supposed to discuss goals and objectives in executive session. And you give update one on the current status of the objectives. Um, and then in December, in executive session, um, you give us progress on goals. Then in February, you give us an update on progress of goals. I don't want this to be a hoop. I mean, that you're constantly, oh. I don't think that's necessary. But I think every, September, so we have to give this to you by June one. Is that correct?
By June first.
June first, okay. So, we've got September, October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May. So I think those three, uh, terms, would be a good check-in point. I mean, because we should definitely chat with you in May to see where you're feeling like you're sitting on everything that's within this.
Yeah, and, and since this is my first year.
Yes.
If, if we could do every other month instead of every third month.
Okay.
Um, I just would prefer more input from you.
Okay.
Um, this year, so I know that I'm meeting all of the expectations that you have and going, and I know we're having a lot of really good conversations and I feel a tremendous amount of support, but I just want to be able to check in with you and then, and then be able to check in and ask you, are there things on here that you feel like you're, you haven't been able to observe that I can either provide verbal input to you or at least leave knowing that I need to provide you some documentation so you can see the evidence of it.
Okay.
Um, that would be helpful for this year.
Okay.
Then after, you know, next year, we feel like we don't need to do it as often. Um, I'm fine with that, but more opportunity this year would be preferred.
Okay.
So we should probably add to that, maybe change these months. And then, um, because part of ours as individual board members, we've completed phase two, which basically we're going through and seeing if it all aligns or if we have questions on what, on what the updates are. Should we do that, update the table to show those?
Sure. Do we also acknowledge that, um, this is all supposed to be done in executive session?
Well, they, they complete, yes, yes, they complete, um, goals and the whole thing, yes, absolutely.
We're just showing the tool right now. This is the evaluation tool.
Okay.
Of doing the evaluation at this point. And like going.
Yeah, no, the instructions going.
We're, yeah, no, this is just the tool, okay.
We're not talking about my performance yet, so.
Correct.
Right.
And we're not talking about your goals yet. So we'll do that in executive session.
So should I plan on being ready for the September board meeting or the October?
October. That'll put us to phase three. So in the meantime, the board members can go back to the spreadsheet and do our phase two kind of thing, or maybe re-familiarize ourselves with the tool again. Because there might be something on there that we see that we think is, doesn't pertain or, uh, maybe it's moved to another person or.
So, but do we want to do September for the first, the phases one and two, September, and then?
Um, well, I think like Michelle was saying, was, we, we sort of talked about all that, uh,
Oh, okay, yeah.
When we did the hiring process, we sort of, um, at least for goals and priorities and all those types of things.
But if we did every other month and we started with October. It would go by these same months. If we did every other month. If we said September for the phase two, where the superintendent creates strategies that support the board goals for the following year. And then move the phase three to November. Phase, the December one to January. The February one to March, and then the final one to May, then we would be.
At June.
At, we would be ready for the June one delivery.
Yep, cause if we met in May, I could give you my, you could ask whoever remain questions, you know, to provide whatever information you want. And then you would have a couple of weeks after that board meeting.
And we wouldn't be scrambling last second to make sure that we had it delivered by. Okay, so what was your revision of? Change, uh, phase two to September. Uh, so the second July one.
Yep.
Would be September. The fa, first phase three one would be November. Second phase three would be Des, uh, January. The February one would be moved to March.
Okay.
And then the April one would be May.
Okay.
And that would line out the year. I think more appropriately for. But I do think we need to, because I look at the different phase one, two, three, and four, and five. And in looking at those phases, what they're asking, I'm trying to figure out how that, it aligns up. But, um, I guess for starters though, those dates. That one would be March, the one. Oh. What were we just looking at?
I've just, I'm just copying what you're doing there.
Oh, okay, cause I did.
On the copy, I'm back at the one that we can see.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, perfect. And that's the one I want too, so I saw her changing it. After I saw you change it, I was like, oh. I realized what you're saying. And then that one would be, that last one would be May, yes.
So this feels like two totally different evaluation tools. And so, and maybe I'm missing the way that this marries with the other.
Well, let's see, I think we can change these, these phases. Cause this was the stuff that, um, was done by ISBA and the previous superintendent. So we can change what we meet about on these dates. This is more of a, kind of a guide so that we can kind of start figuring out what we want to discuss in those maybe? Is that what you're thinking, Michelle? Rather than following these exact, what does it say, responsibilities? Yeah. There we go, okay. I switched back.
Cause your, so your phases are these colored, I'm now on the spreadsheet. The phases are the colored?
No, the colored is the leadership standards.
Right, that's what I thought I was reading in the phases.
Correct, phase two are the leadership standards.
Okay, yeah. So that, so that means that we're only talking about this document when we're talking about phase two and then phase three, four, and five are something different?
See, well, that, that's what I'm saying is these phases are, um, so phase one is begin with an overview of the jo, of the current job descri, description for the superintendent. Some of these may be adopted and inserted into policy. If there's not a current job description available, contact ISBA for a sample template. So things like that, like, that's phase one. That, we've already done that.
Right, so when we meet on phase two or looking, that's a lot of information. I guess that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around. When we meet on phase two, there, there's a lot in those.
See, and that's what I'm saying is when, we, we can meet like every other month, but I don't think that we should be necessarily worrying about the different phases in our meetings.
More about just the evaluation.
Yeah. Well, and again, we have created our own measurable documents to use for the evaluation.
Right.
So I personally think if we're going to utilize a phase process, we need to make those phases conducive to what we've created. Not keep using, well, ISBA says we have to do it this way, ISBA says we have to do it that way. I agree, and that's what I'm saying is I think we can use those, the meeting dates, just because this already is a, a table that we could put meetings in and change the phases to match more closely with what we are actually evaluating and looking at.
Yeah.
Well, and we don't necessarily even have to have a five-phase process.
Right, right.
We can simply throw the page out and then just say.
Meet on this other document.
Yeah, exactly. That, and that's what I, that's what I think is that we just kind of discuss, you know, kind of see where we're at.
Yeah, that feels more doable to, as far as like having this be meaningful.
Right.
And trying to manage, the other, they both, that one, um, is a little bit more vague, I guess, and.
The spreadsheet is very.
This is super easy to follow and, um, I, I'll be able to speak to all of these things, so.
What, on the spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
I haven't read through every single one of them, but it, it's what I'm doing, so.
Right.
And then it would give me an opportunity to talk about the goals and how they tie into some of these pieces.
How you're using those responsibilities to come back to achieving your goals. So, do we want to total, spend the time now to take out these phases or at least reword that, that page of the document to kind of summarize how, how this process will go? Well, half the kids in the neighborhood.
Just want to look who you just got.
I want to go home. Uh, couldn't you just take out the ph, the phases? And, cause then it's just board and superintendent and executive session of the board meeting. Sorry, that's my vitamins. You're, um, talking about the targets, you're talking about the goals, and you just took out the phase numbers. Then it actually shows what we're doing.
What we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what we can do is since we'll meet again next, at the next board meeting in an executive session, we can each kind of put some comments in on our copy to review. And then we can supplement on the copy pages. So don't, like, don't focus on these phases, um, the, the timeframes or anything.
Yeah.
Don't, yeah, just focus on the spreadsheet. And then if there's goals that you want. And then if there's goals that you want to add into this document, then we can add those. But we can come up with, you know, and then that way someone can go. Everyone will be happy.
I agree. I think that'll work great.
Yeah, okay.
All righty.
Okay. Okay.
And Melissa, if you have suggestions about how to put this together, feel free to share those thoughts. We don't have all the answers, you know?
You don't?
No.
I don't know about you, but.
Randy, thanks for your stuff.
Just do a good job. Somehow confidence always do it, I guess.
Yeah, whatever it takes.
Because we are definitely open to suggestions.
Yep.
And input.
I feel like the spreadsheet is, like I said, that looks like what I'm doing. So at least for this year, I'm happy to use that.
Okay.
And then we can kind of, at the end of the year, after the evaluation is done, just talk about ways that we could tweak it a little bit to make it flow better for you.
Okay.
Flow better for me, if it doesn't. And then might be, you might find that the conversation in executive session is valuable and it gives, this gives us the means for the conversation, so it works.
Okay.
And it is all those domains. It is everything that's laid out in the IDAPA.
Yeah.
So.
All the ISLA standards for leadership.
And I personally don't have any concern about you raising the case to achieve what's on here at all, so.
Well, and this was our best guess at how those different items fit best into those categories.
True.
So if you feel like that any of those would, would link better or fit better in a different category, please let us know and we can, we can move stuff to, you know, to better align with those categories.
Because this is specifically a board collaboration because we had no input from the previous person, so.
Well, I just look forward to working with you guys and to your feedback.
Okay, cool, cool. So can you please note that we're at the September board meeting to do executive session and include this tool? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay. So then. So I will come with my goals for the September board meeting.
What if I had to chat longer? I'm not there.
Forty-two minutes.
Go ahead and include the workshop portion of this special meeting.
And it's the last workshop.
Yay.
Thank you.
That was a great summer.